This time, I'd like to go ahead and call to order the November 14th, 2007 Planning Commission meeting. Let's record show that Mr. Scott Courtwright is absent and all other commissioners are present. Before we get started, I want to make a couple of announcements. Item 5C, the Jan Mark Abel property, lots H-6-A through H-6-E, has been pulled from the agenda, and we will not be discussing that item this evening. So if anyone is here to speak on that property, I believe it's supposed to be next month, we're gonna take that back up, Charles?
Okay.
It's only had one announcement to make. Moving along, item 3, acceptance of the minutes of the October 10th, 2007 meeting.
Charles, we have an amendment.
An amended set of minutes?
That's a September meeting. We'll take that up under old business. Should've been in your package.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Steve Barrow, seconded by Don Grant. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 4, public comment period. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on any item that is not up for public hearing on the agenda, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you'll get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Item 5, public hearing for granting approval to the following family partitions. 5A, the Robert P. LeBlanc property, lots A-1, A-2, and A-3.
James Fauqua, representing Earls &amp; Associates and Mr. Robert LeBlanc, in the following family partition, asking the commission for approval.
Comments or questions from commissioners? If there are no comments or questions from commissioners, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this item, please sign in with the secretary, and you'll get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Any comments or questions from commissioners?
There's a couple of things that say that consultant has not corrected plat, items 2 and 3. Have those been corrected?
What were those corrections?
The owner of lot BB2B must sign the dedication.
Yes, Cynthia Stafford, yes, they have.
Since the number of lots serviced by the...
Yeah, and it was moved to a 50-foot servitude.
Okay. And then what about the Ascension Parish Health Unit objection?
Yes, sir. It'd be through piping sewer fluid, through piping through the 15-foot servitude across the back of the lots.
Okay.
And I did talk to the guy, and he said that would be sufficient enough.
Is that noted on the plat?
Yeah, on the new plat, it is noted. They gave us the...well, they made the comments after all the deadline for it. CJ Godin and Board of Health made notes three, four days after the deadline to turn in the new plats. So we kind of missed that deadline. We corrected the original CSRS's comments, but when everything else came back, it came out three, four days later.
So we don't have the new plat with that comment on there. Have you seen it, Charles?
Yeah.
Okay. You're okay with it?
It's okay.
What I can do is, when the plat comes to me to be signed, Charles, let's make a note to make sure that that is...just double-check it before I sign it. If it's not there, I won't sign the plat.
I had a question. I noticed a new note, and it just references what you had just said about the affluent discharge through piping along the back 15-foot drainage servitude. Is that something new? I noticed it on a couple of these...
Well, we have a note in there that all new sewage has to be approved by the Board of Health, and that was the standard note to put. And now the Board of Health guy wants more detail of how it's actually gonna be discharged.
Okay, but to me, this is saying it's going through piping, and to me, that says underground piping. Am I the only one that interpreted that way? Anybody else notice it?
Actually, you're not gonna be discharging it, and the piping is...you're gonna put it all into that pipe inside the drainage servitude, or is that pipe gonna discharge into the servitude?
The way he worded it was to put 15...through piping to the 15-foot drainage servitude.
Right.
Yeah. That was his word to put on the plat.
Sorry?
But this...okay, this says through piping along the 15-foot drainage servitude.
Well, it goes to the 15-foot servitude, and it's gonna get discharged along that ditch, swell ditch in the back, I believe.
So essentially, there'll be three separate pipes discharging into the ditch.
Yeah.
It doesn't...she's right. It doesn't read very clear.
Yeah.
To me, it says they're all going to one...
We put the exact words that he requested us, but I mean, we can change it, I mean, if he likes it, but that was his words. Any new...any service...any sewage disposal has to be approved by them, so whatever people bring to them for approval, he has to approve it anyway.
Well...
Just 'cause he wants us to put on the plat, ultimately, he still has to approve it, one way or another.
Right, and I understand that, but to me, what you're saying is, it's going to be all the drain...the affluent is going to go into a covered pipe along the back of the property, and that's not what's gonna happen. So to me, it's saying you're gonna do more than what you're really gonna do, so I think we need to clarify that note.
And just to point out to you what's happening...
I wouldn't think they're gonna put the servitude, but it's gonna be underground tubing to the ditch in the back. I wouldn't think they'd leave it exposed underground.
Well, I'm gonna say, but what I'm trying to explain to you is, is that what's happening in other developments is that they actually...the swell is actually has a drainage pipe in it. It's a perforated pipe. The sewer discharges into that pipe.
Yeah.
Okay? And it's...but it's covered, rather than having an open ditch with healthy water. And so we just want clarity of what's gonna happen.
Okay.
So which is it? You don't know?
I mean, it's up to the Board of Health, would they approve?
Let me comment.
Okay, where's the ditch go, to the south or to the north?
Whatever DHH tells them to do, they gotta do.
Yeah.
So what they put on the plat, we could...he could...they could tell him to put something on the plat, and they could go out there and tell him to do something differently as to what...
They have the ultimate approval.
They're ultimately gonna tell him how he's gotta run his sewer fluid, and they're taking a real...
No matter what we put on the plat.
Taking a much more detailed look at some of these things.
15-foot drainage, does it continue to the south or to the north?
Yes, sir, it does.
Which? To the south or to the north?
To the south.
Which? To the south.
I can tell you, DHH is not gonna let it leave the property without having a certitude. Now, they're not allowing...and they're gonna want written servitudes and all from now on, so that's...they're really taking the detail.
Yeah, and I understand that, but to me, this is saying it's going into a covered pipe along the rear of the servitude. And I just think it's misrepresenting what's actually gonna happen. And not saying it's your fault, just saying that it needs to be clarified.
Okay.
And if that'll be done at a different time, that's fine. We'll just put that in the motion.
You know, frankly, if it were up to me, I'd prefer that it go into...I mean, what I've seen done with that perforated pipe works a lot better. I mean, I don't know what that results in maintenance to the parish, but it...
I mean, we could just take that note out, and it ultimately follows the Department of Health anyway.
Right.
So, I mean, the note states that it has to be approved by them, so if we take that note out, no matter what, it still has to be approved by them. So we won't say exactly how it's gonna be there. The Department of Health just has to approve it.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Do you know if there's a timetable for removing the existing trailer?
Pretty soon, 'cause she wants to build on it pretty quickly. For the first of the year, she wants to put another mobile home on the property.
Okay. I think if we make a motion to approve this, we also need to include a timetable for the removal. I think some things are getting away from us, that we're not setting timetables on, and no action is being taken.
There are, or there is, another method. And I'm not gonna say it can be used for every item, but in cases where permits are to be issued, Laverne has...I know there's a couple of other issues that's come up where Laverne did tell me that they wouldn't...if it wasn't taken care of, they wouldn't issue the permit. So Laverne, can we still rely on you for some...I mean, I'm not gonna say we're gonna do this every time, but some cases where items need to be removed, or something needs to take place where permitting is something that y'all can keep an eye out for and not issue the permit if the...
Is there anyone occupying the trailer at this time? No? Okay.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve contingent on the note being addressed with DHH. The trailer being removed before occupancy permit is written? Is that the correct way to say it?
I'm gonna propose that you do it prior to issuance of any building permit. That's when Laverne really has the ability.
Okay.
So he would do it before the permit's issued.
Okay.
It would have to be removed.
Okay. And then that no further subdivision be allowed?
I'll second that.
Have a motion to approve with condition by Sherry Sliman, seconded by Julio Dumas. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 5B, the Sam H. Frederick property, lots 2-A-1-A and 2-A-2-B.
Representing Ms. Kathy Bruner, on the following family partition, asking the commission for approval.
Any comments or questions from commissioners?
Same question about the method and location of the sewer fluid.
Yeah. Oh, it's been addressed. Yeah, it's been addressed on the plat.
Okay. And, Charles, you've seen that, and you're satisfied with that? Okay.
Yeah.
Is that on this plat, or this is another?
The 15-foot swell ditch coming on through the property, kinda catagoted in an angle.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Then if there are no comments or questions, we'll open up the public comment period. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this property, please sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak.
Okay, then I have a comment, or a question. I don't see a hardship on this partition, because this lot could be moved to the front, and it would have adequate road frontage. There's 135 feet of frontage up there that's available.
I don't know if you've ever been to the property. There's some beautiful trees in the back, and that's where she wants to put her mobile home and everything in the back, back there, in the shaded area. So that's where she desired, and that's where her grandfather will...is willing to give property. And if you've been out there, there's a lot of...they graze cattle and all that on the southern side. And there's only 194 feet up in the front. If you cut off this house, you know, if you break it in half, your property line's right on the house.
Just for clarity's sake, what's a swell?
It's a swell ditch. It's a...not a very steep ditch.
Is this ditch like really swell? Is that why it's called a swell?
Swell.
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 Swell ditch. It don't draw on.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? What is the wish of the commission?
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Paige Becknell.
Second.
Seconded by Don Grant. Is there any opposition or discussion?
I'm opposed.
I have one, now, Sherry Sliman. Item 5D, the John L. Bro property, tract A-4-A and A-4-B.
Representing Mr. John Bro, on the following family partition, dividing the lot into two tracts, selling the estates of their mother.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
I think your geometry for Smith Hard Road there is a little interesting.
Smith Hard Road?
I mean, if I understand this...
It's the wrong plat.
Probably gonna access these three lots.
That's not the right plat. That one's been off the agenda.
That's the one I had my packet for.
That was one from the lead.
Oh, that's right. My apologies. I wanted to get to that one.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Then at this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this property, please sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Comments or questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Sherry Sliman.
Second.
Seconded by Paige Becknell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 5E, the Harrington J. Distat junior property, lots 3-A and 3-B.
Representing Mr. Harrington, on the following partition, asking the commission for approval.
Comments or questions from commissioners? If there are no comments or questions from commissioners, then we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this item, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Comments, questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve with no further division of these lots.
Have a motion with condition by Paige Becknell.
Second.
Seconded by Sherry Sliman. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 5F, Charles A. Bear Senior property, lots 4-B-1-A through 4-B-1-G.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Charles A. Bear, and I'm asking the Planning Commission to approve the family, the Charles A. Bear Senior family petition. Comments have been addressed by the consulting agent and reviewed by the agent agencies, and all the corrections to the plat have been made. My surveyor is standing here, and he'll have any technical questions you may have.
Any comments or questions from commissioners?
There's a question about the method and location of sewer removal for the lots here.
All right, that basically gets back to the conversation earlier with depending on what the Board of Health requires. After you put the Mo-Dad in, it will eventually drain into Babin Canal, which serves as drainage for apartment complexes and several houses.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Don't you have to have a drainage servitude along the rear of...
Each lot.
Of the lots?
I'm sorry.
I think you need to have a drainage servitude along the rear of the lots. Correct, Charles?
What we understood is that the drain was gonna come along the roadway to the drainage channel.
There's no drainage servitude.
Well, roadside ditches, though, within the servitude of passage.
I think what Julio was referring to is along the rear of lot 4-B-1-C and 4-B-1-D. Yes, there's an existing 15-foot drainage servitude, but there's no drainage servitude along lots B, G, F, and E.
G has one, actually. It's the Babin Canal.
Well, okay, Babin Canal.
Yeah, but I'm talking about F and E, and they're not connected, right?
Well, B has one, too, also.
I believe that's required under the drainage ordinance.
It is.
Right.
How is the water gonna get from a drainage servitude that seems to go nowhere to Babin Canal?
We can install a drainage servitude on the rear of lots 4-B, 1-G through 4-B, 1-D, but now, as an individual, I don't understand why the drainage can't be channeled to the front of those lots along the roadway, and then from there to Babin Canal. I mean, what's the difference if you drain it to the front of the lot or to the back of the lot?
It can be anywhere on the lot, correct? But you just have to have one. Those lots don't have any at all.
Well, that's true.
We're gonna run it to the road ditch. We have the servitude and the road going all the way through the back.
But that's not a...that's not a dedicated servitude where if it needs to be cleaned out, the parish can go in and clean it out.
What we have to do to do that?
You...
If you had the servitude, if they have to drain it...
Yeah, we can give you the servitude necessary along the roadside. I was just trying to conserve a little property as much as possible by not...I mean, if I have to give another 10 foot...we're giving 72 feet on this roadway to begin with, and I would rather not have to give another 10 feet in addition to that on the backside of the lot, when you can drain the lot to the road and into Babin Canal.
But at the same time, sir, it could've been demonstrated...it could've been shown that way on the plat, and it wasn't. That's what we're trying to figure out, what you're going to do as far as the drainage. Now, you're talking about giving up 72 foot of roadway. Actually, what you're giving up is 60 foot as far as the servitude of passage, and you're giving up 12-foot utility servitude, which should be separated. Should not...the utility servitude should not be set inside the servitude of passage.
So it needs to be called out separately. Stop, correct me if I'm wrong, that drainage is required in the code to be in the rear of the lot. So if he wants to move it to the front of the lot, you know, he'd have to request that variance in his application, correct?
I think you would have to grant a variance.
Right.
Yeah.
So that, you know, that needs to be incorporated in part of your request and part of your application. You know, we're not here to guess where your drainage is gonna go. You need to show that.
Okay, so what is necessary now?
The ordinance requires a 15-foot drainage servitude along the rear of the lots. If you wanna move it to the front, it needs to be part of your request to have a variance to put it in the front of the lot. It can be granted, but you need to formally request that.
It says in the rear of the lots. So it doesn't even have a servitude. You can run a driveway, but the ordinance requires it in the rear of the lot. We have to do it, we have to do it.
We can add that to the plat, that's the condition.
Are there any comments or other comments or questions from commissioners?
As far as Babin Canal itself, what is the...you have, I guess it's probably 60 feet of servitude? I mean, two of them you got identified as drainage servitude, and the other one you do not. Is it all drainage servitude? And then as a follow-up question, how are you gonna cross the canal? What are you gonna do?
Well, we have a culvert crossing the canal now, and we have a road constructed.
And I guess the Drainage Board has approved the culvert size and everything?
The parish installed it.
Okay. So what's...so it's 60 feet of servitude? Is that what it is?
They had told me 62 feet. I'm not quite sure.
Well, the dimensions need to be...show what it is, 'cause it adds up to 60 here, so...and only two of the 15 feet are showing as servitude, so you need to correct it as all servitude.
Are there any other comments or questions from commissioners?
I guess my concern here is that we have seven lots, which is really close to a subdivision. Five of these lots have the potential to be subdivided again down the line, which could create a huge problem drainage-wise. So I'm having a little bit of difficulty trying to walk myself through this one.
Okay. My grandfather homesteaded this place 98 years ago. Since then, the only people lived on that have been A. Bears. I would like to give my children and my grandchildren some of the A. Bear property, and I would like to keep it within the rural character of the parish. So it's not likely that we're gonna subdivide it now after the 100 years. Of course, the intent is to have the grandkids live there and have A. Bears living on the A. Bear property.
How old are the grandchildren? You say grandchildren live there.
16, 14 to 18, three of them. And I wanted to do that now, before I get to the age where I just have to write it out in my will, and I would like to see it done, and help my grandkids when they're gonna need help, and my children.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? If not, then at this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this item, please sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. Mr. A. Bear, if you would, would you have a seat? We've got somebody who wants to address the commission on this.
My name is Matt Dedine. My family owns the land adjacent to the east side and the south side of this family partition. We don't oppose the family partition. We welcome it. My concern was, which I think y'all have addressed, is the drainage on that property. And Babin Canal, I live off of Babin Canal, too. Canal's big enough to hold the water that...on this property has been there forever, but I would just like to make sure that the water is going...he shows on his map where the water's going to Babin Canal instead of, you know...because this drainage servitude on the south side, I own the corner, and my nephew owns the back of it, and it goes nowhere. So if they cut a ditch there, the water would just spill over onto my property, you know? So they need some...I just like for them to show where the drainage would go. I'm not...I do not oppose the family partition. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. John A. Bear?
Good afternoon. John A. Bear, I'm Charles A. John Abayer, I'm Charles Abayer's son. And the petition incorporates a portion of property that would be granted to me if approved. I've been born and raised... I lived my whole life on that piece of property. I was named after my great-grandfather, who homesteaded it. I've done a bunch of work to comply with the parish government as far as accessing the rear half of the property due to the fact that the family allowed Babin Canal to cut through the middle of the property. I'm just asking for approval. The three smaller lots would be my father's only three grandchildren, which are my three children. And I've been there all my life, and I would like to stay there. And I'd like for my kids to be able to live on the property as well. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all?
Okay.
Mr. Abayer, if you would, can you come back up, please, sir? Mr. Charles Abayer. Is there any other comments that you have for the commission?
No, I mean, we've been living in the parish for 100 years, and why would you want to put restrictions on permanent residents that have been here all this time? And we hear a lot of talk about the rural character, particularly in San Amo. And that's all I want. I want my grandkids to be around me so they can take care of me at the time I get to where I won't be able to take care of myself or my wife. It would be nice if I'd have all my children next to me and my grandkids. I only have three. I'm not gonna have any more than that. So, and I kinda wanted to get all this done at a time in my life when I can see it taking place, as opposed to on my deathbed. So, you know, it's not a shortcut to try and make a subdivision or anything. We have abided by all the requests that the parish has asked us to do. And I just ask that y'all consider that. You know, we're some of the old people. We don't have old money, but we're old people in the parish. And it would be nice to have your family next to you for the duration of my life and my wife's. So we respectfully request y'all to grant a petition.
Thanks, sir. Any comments or questions from commissioners? What is the wish of the commission?
Mr. Abayer, I'm gonna make a motion to defer this and give you an opportunity to address, you know, the numerous issues that are with this plat. I think you need to solve the drainage issues and have a clear plat before us. I don't want to put the burden on staff to make sure that it's done properly and the chairman to sign it when it's finally presented to him. And secondly, you know, I'd like for you to look at this from a different perspective. And that is that, you know, you are dividing property. And really, you know, it's a family partition. John, your son, will take possession of one of these parcels of land. There's nothing really to physically keep him from coming back and further subdividing it or selling to somebody that'll do it in the future. So I'm gonna ask you to just look at this and the minor differences that you would have with the subdivision and consider some of those other requirements as a possibility that you might want to consider when you bring it back. Because I think it is a division of property. You know, whether you want to call it whatever it is, it's a subdivision. And I think we need to take a look at that. So I'm gonna make a motion to defer it so that all of the comments that are addressed on the plat, the proper labeling of the private servitude of passage, the right dimension for Babin Canal right of way, and to locate all of the drainage servitudes that are required here. If you're gonna put them in the front and you're gonna request a variance, then make it clear in your application that that's what you're gonna do and make sure you at least graphically represent how you're going to do the drainage on the property so at least it can be off record, okay? So that's my motion to defer.
I have a motion to defer by Julio Dumas.
Second.
Second by Steve Barrow. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item 5G, Leroy Meyer property tract X1 through X7.
Hi, I'm Brittany A. Edmiston, and I'm speaking on behalf of the owner of the property, my grandfather, Leroy Meyer. I'm asking the planning commission for approval of the Leroy J. Meyer family partition. Comments from the planning department, the consulting agency, and other review agencies have been addressed and corrected on the plat. My surveyor is here to answer any technical questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from commissioners? If there are no comments or questions from commissioners at this time, then we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this property, please sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Comments or questions from commissioners?
My name is Samuel Brown, and I live in the Bonterre State Subdivision. Property that is directly adjacent to this property. I really don't... I am not opposed to the property. I would just like to have further knowledge as to how it's gonna be subdivided and what is the future plan for it. I would like to have some idea as to what are the plans as far as drainage? If they plan on building on the property? And if they are planning on building on the property, what are they gonna do as far as effluent from the property? Because my property drains from the rear to the front. And if there is a property... If there's a problem with drainage on that property, then of course I will have a problem with the drainage. So as long as I have a very good idea as to what is gonna happen in terms of the plan for the property and plan for the drainage, but as far as the property itself being subdivided, I don't have any problem with that.
Mr. Quintmore.
Yes, to answer the drainage issue, the property does drain in New River Canal, all sewage influence. Would also go into New River Canal from the MODAD systems, which are private. So there is no other drainage issue here. I live adjacent to the property myself, familiar to the way it drains. And it does, as a whole, drain into New River, from which the lot's front. As far as use of the property, that's a personal question.
I'm going to assume that from the application, it is going to go to family members for their use.
Yes. The names of the persons on the tract are me and my sisters and brothers and cousins. This is all immediate family. And as far as it... I know you had previous questions about it turning into a subdivision. I live in a subdivision. I don't want to anymore. That's why we're moving here. We value the fact that I have a four-year-old stepson, that he can go outside and play and not have to worry about being on a busy street or anything, stuff like that. We're a young family, starting out, and I grew up on this land, and I'd also like my children to be able to benefit from that.
O'Neill, does a family partition include cousins?
Grandchildren. It's a grandfather giving to his grandchildren. That can be cousins.
Okay. And then I had another question. It says here, "Request for variance on the width of the private road." Can somebody speak to what that is?
Yes. That is the 40-foot private servitude on the double-L extension from X2 to X3 due to the dimensions of the lot. We would like to reduce that from 60 to 40 just so to access the track X. Like she said, it's family property, and there's no plans for subdivisions or anything else other than that. And to have buildable areas from what they would like to construct. They're asking for that variance.
Well, not to be... Not to sound negative about this, but looking towards the future, track X1 is a 25-acre tract of land, and how would you propose to have adequate access to it in the future when it does get redeveloped?
Well, at that time, I'm sure the planning commission would consider not approving it due to the fact that it wouldn't have adequate right of passage to it.
Well, I'd be hard-pressed to do that if I don't... If they don't own the adjacent property, that's the only means of ingress and egress to the parcel land.
We're just asking for the variance for use, so we'll make that decision.
As far as what the other 25 acres would be used for, there are 15 grandchildren. These lots here are just the ones that are eldest and able financially and prepared to build on the land.
So are you saying in the future, you're gonna divide this in the back to 15 other?
Oh, no, there's 15, including us. It would be, again, my brother's not on here. It's me and my three sisters and my two cousins, which are also my grandfather's grandchildren.
But there's 10 other ones.
There's 10 other ones. Are you saying that...
Three of them don't live here. They wouldn't have access. It wouldn't, as far as public access, it wouldn't be an issue.
Still leaves seven if I'm figuring all this out right.
And it would be the...
So nobody else wants this property?
The same way we are.
And you're not gonna sell it?
No, no. At no point.
Well, I don't have a problem with what your grandfather's trying to do. I have an issue with the variance in that. You know, you're essentially setting up a 25-acre parcel of land to be redeveloped sometime in the future with a substandard means of ingress and egress.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? What is the wish of the commission?
I'm gonna make a motion to deny. It's too many lots. It's circumventing the ordinance to get a subdivision, even though it's gonna be a family, and I understand that and I sympathize with you. It's gonna be a subdivision.
I have a motion to deny by Sherri Slimon.
Second.
Seconded by Paige Becknell. Is there any opposition or discussion?
Ms. Chair, before you do that, I'd like to make a substitute motion. I make a motion to deny on the basis that the variance is not a reasonable request, and it would render the property to the West as having a substandard means of ingress and egress.
Rather than making a substitute motion, ask Sherri if she'll amend her motion to deny for the same thing, since you're also making a motion to deny.
Would you amend your motion?
Did staff get all that? Okay, still have a motion to deny, or amended motion to deny, by Sherri Slimon, seconded by Paige Becknell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 5H, Cleveland J. Babin property, lots 1-B-1 and 1-B-2.
Good evening. I'm Mrs. Cleveland J. Babin. I'm the owner of the property. And I have already asked the planning commission to approve for the planning department and the consultant agencies and other review agencies have been addressed and corrected on the plat. Mr. Quintmore is here if you want to ask some regular technical questions.
Are there any comments or questions from commissioners?
Charles, we can assume the health question was addressed?
Yes.
Ms. Babin, lot 1B3, the front lot where the access is, is that... Do you have any plans to build on that lot? Or is that lot just for access?
Those first two lots in the front, opening on Bro Road, my grandchildren already live there. And the granddaughter that lives in one of them, it's her brother that's going to go behind her. And that's the last lot that I have for a grandchild. Everybody has a home.
Not in...
This lot here.
Well, you're gonna have to tell me, Mr. Quintmore. I haven't even looked at a map.
Yeah. This one is just used for access. That is correct.
So it's not...
Okay.
No, there isn't no room to build in.
Are there any other comments or questions from commissioners? Then at this time, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this property, please sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak.
Good evening. My name's Dino Lejeune, and my property backs up to the property that is in question. And I have a lot of problems with drainage where I'm at. I'm located on Woodland Avenue, which the back of my property, it's currently a pasture, cow pastures, where they're planning on putting these trailers. I had heard there was gonna be two trailers put there behind my property. I'm not sure if that's changed, Denny. I've lived in that subdivision in my house for 22 years. Up until Katrina, I've never flooded. However, Summer Lake just got developed right there off of Bro Road. They dug a big lake there, built that property up. With time, over and over, keep getting more and more water coming onto the back of my property. Through these current pastures, it drains into a small servitude ditch that lines the back of my property, that drains into the Babin Canal, that overflows when it rains heavy, and it also goes across to Causey Road. If y'all be in the parish, y'all should know how many times that bridge at Causey Road and Bro is closed down because the water's going across the bridge. In my subdivision, at the end of my subdivision where I'm at, this, my house, is flooding. I almost got water at Katrina and Rita. Had to sandbag my house to keep it from coming in. It was not like that up until three years ago. It just keeps getting worse. If they're coming in and they're gonna put a lot of dirt behind me, I'm gonna get more water on the back of my property. I'm gonna flood. I want to know where the drainage is going for these trailers, where their sewage is gonna be drained to, because the only ditch that they can go into is on my property. It's on the back of my property. Do y'all know the questions, the answers to those questions? I'm not sure how they're planning on putting drainage into there. Are they planning on going all the way from back there to Bro Road? Or are they coming into the ditch that comes up behind my house?
And that's what we'll try and find out tonight, ma'am.
Okay. I'm not opposed to it if it is gonna be, you know, for family, and it's gonna remain that way. But as I know now, the two front trailers, there is a grandchild lives in one. The other trailer is being rented out. If they put more trailers back there behind me, are those trailers gonna be eventually rented out? I just have a lot of problems with the drainage in my area. And it just tends to get worse and worse as more subdivisions are being built right there. And there is a big problem with that Bro... with that Bro Road canal that goes from Road all the way to Causey Road. There's a big drainage problem right there when it rains heavy. Or we have a lot of rain from a hurricane, like we did experience with Rita and Katrina. Do y'all know if they're going to be bringing in dirt on that property? Are they digging out ponds on that property?
We don't know. We're going to try and find out, get some of the answers to those questions tonight.
Well, I just, I just don't want to see my home flood. Supposedly, I'm in a non-flood zone, but I've sandbagged for Rita and Katrina, and it nearly got in my house, and I've been there 23 years, and it's never been like this. In the last five years, it's gotten bad. My yard looks like a lake when it rains heavy. If we get more than an inch and a half of rain, I got a lake, and I drain from the back to the front.
Thank you.
Do you want to adjust the drainage?
Let's go ahead and get all the other comments, Clint.
Okay. My name is Miranda Colligan. I live in one of the front lots there on Bro Road. The lot that's proposed behind me is for my younger brother. I think I can put up a picture of him. Is that, can you see that? He's a Baton Rouge Sheriff's Deputy. He's been a deputy for less than a year, and we were always taught, growing up, that if you don't own land, you don't own anything. And we were always told, if you want to live on family property, you will live on family property, and that is, you know, is an important thing to our family. The plan for the property is for one new mobile home to be placed on the lot for my brother to live in. There are no plans to build up the property at all, just to place the mobile home, comply with whatever the parish needs as far as drainage. We do not have a problem with that. If I need to, you know, do something, I will. I think that's it. And also, one of the other reasons I would like my brother to live next door to me is to help take care of my son. He has cerebral palsy, he's three years old, and my brother is one of the few family members that has been trained to care for his special needs, and that I do trust to take care of my son, and I feel that it's important that he's close to me in the event of an emergency. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Quintmore, if you would, could you tell us about the drainage on this property?
As far as the drainage and the servitudes, those are existing drainage servitudes. I'm sure the client would be happy to put a order in for the parish to come out and do maintenance that they're required to do on their drainage servitudes, and whatever's necessary to help bring better drainage on those existing drainage servitudes.
I see there's also a proposed 15-foot drainage servitude for lot 1-B-2 and part of 1-B-1.
That is correct.
Where is it, where is it going? I guess the reason I'm asking that question is because the existing servitudes all stop at the property line. So how's, is the water going to Bro Road? Or is the topography of the land going to allow the water to go to Bro Road?
I would rather a person who has seen drainage or water answer that question. As far as who has seen standing water on the property, if you would like to answer where the water flows. As far as what's dedicated on the plat, I can't go beyond the property line.
Well, let me ask you a question, before you put her on the spot. You know, to the north into Summer Lake subdivision, do those two ditches connect to a ditch? Do they connect to a drainage system?
I'm not aware.
Rather, is there a drainage ditch along the rear of lots 17 through 21 in Summer Lake subdivision?
Not that I'm aware of.
What about to the south? Does that ditch connect to anywhere?
Which would be...
So these are just holes in the...
That goes to that drainage servitude that backs up to her property, which is, it's actually a very small ditch. It does need to be dug out. I haven't had any problems with the water.
Okay, and then along, along the south property line of the proposed lot, you're proposing a new drainage ditch that you're going to extend over, that you're going to also extend over to that north-south ditch, correct?
That's where the sewage, yeah, that's where the sewage discharge to the ditch. But you also have the option, due to health departments, they want to run it out to a different amount.
Right, that's practically all it does.
Staff, wouldn't, wouldn't, Summer Lake subdivision, wouldn't there have been required a ditch along the rear of lots 17 through 21 and the rest of those lots?
It really depends when it was developed.
Are there any other comments or questions from commissioners?
I don't think, I don't think we have enough information. If we're concerned about the drainage, I know there's a big drainage canal or a big area at the corner, you know, there's a very large drainage area, Causey and Bro.
There's a canal that passes through there. They did dig that canal out during the summer, and I would assume, we haven't had any very heavy rains, but I would assume that that would have helped with some of the problems.
So I would think the water would go towards Causey and drain that way?
The water off of our property?
Or to Bro, from y'all to Bro, right, and then drain into that canal.
Right, like I said, if I need to run his water across my property, that's fine.
Any other comments?
Just out of, I guess, out of curiosity, you know, wouldn't it be simpler? You know, you've got lot 1B3 that, for all practical purposes, serves as a means of ingress and egress, right?
That's obvious. There's only a driveway on it.
Right, and you've got room on either side of the 40-foot servitude.
Correct.
You know, rather than putting that drainage servitude on the south side of lot 1B2, why don't you just make that lot a little bit bigger to go all the way to the north side of the private servitude, and then put in that drainage servitude that goes all the way from Bro Road all the way east until it ties into those ditches? And that way, you've got a direct outflow into Bro Road, and it's, and it's a nice, simple solution for you.
If we move the 40-foot private servitude a little north in order to gain enough width on the south side of 1B3 and on a drainage servitude through there to Bro Road, would that be adequate?
Fine, either way. I mean, I'm just thinking about a way for you to have a direct line from Bro Road to these, to this Y-shaped servitude that appears to go nowhere, and at least, at least be able to discharge the water on all of your property onto Bro Road so that, you know, you really don't affect your neighbors.
So you would want to run a drainage servitude from Bro Road all the way to one of the...
One of those Y ditches, yeah.
To here.
I mean, you know, I, you know, I'm going to move it first so you can revise your plan and bring a complete plan. I don't have a problem with what you're doing.
There is zero impact.
I understand that.
Longer than you had today or yesterday, because it's a mobile home. You got a child with cerebral palsy. If this is not a true variance and hardship, I don't know what is.
I don't have a problem with your variance and everything. I just have an issue with, you know, sooner or later, that'll become a home. Okay? So if you don't mind deferring it for 30 days, I'll make a motion for deferring. Let's get it straight, and that way, we can get you a good plan.
I have a motion to defer by Julio Dumas.
Second.
Seconded by Sherri Slimon. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 6, 6, public hearing for grain preliminary approval to the following subdivision, 6A, Ascension Marketplace. Mr. Sledge.
My name is Wayne Sledge. I'm with GWS Engineering. What we have submitted to the commission tonight is a preliminary plat for a commercial park literally at the intersection of LA 73 and Interstate 10. The property is currently zoned across its commercial. It encompasses about 10.3 acres. What we've proposed is an eight-lot commercial development. The street is designed to be a concrete street. It has drainage literally on site. There's Johnson's Bayou, which actually cuts off the, I'd call it the southeast corner of the property, which would serve as the main drainage outfall. As far as the general big three items of a preliminary plat, the drainage, the traffic and the sewer. The drainage, we've done a comprehensive by-the-book drainage impact study. What it showed was that we're going to have to do a retention area in the back of a little less than one acre. Running the computer model, we have shown and indicated to the engineering review agency that we actually are going to do a slight improvement over the pre-existing condition. Round numbers, it's a net change of zero, but actually, to get down to the smaller decimal points, we've actually shown an improvement on the drainage. As regards the sewer, what we've proposed is a sewer treatment plant, and there's been some comments with the review agency and others concerning its location. Where we've actually shown it is basically adjacent to Interstate 10 on the extreme eastern portion of the property at the end of the proposed street. The reason we did that is simple engineering 101. The property has approximately five feet of fall from LA 73 towards Interstate 10. We literally put the treatment plant and the associated pump station at the lower end of the property. There has been a request and some discussion, what about the parish coming through with the public system? We need to make it accessible along the major roads. I agree with that when all things are the same. In this case, it literally is a topographic issue, and so if we put the pump station closer to the highway, it would simply be putting the sewer against the grain, or you'd actually be tunneling uphill. So we would request that, you know, consideration be given to leaving it where it is. Obviously, y'all control the final destiny on that, but we have put it where we think it's appropriate, and we've put it literally where we can discharge without much effort into the major drainage channel, which would be the eventual outfall anyway. The state does not like anyone discharging into their area, and so the treatment plant and the pump station, you know, we have shown it where we think it's appropriate. As concerns the roadway, there has been some discussion on the alignment of the roadway, where it is, why we did it, and so forth. If you look carefully on your preliminary plat, there's a dash line or a pair of dash lines that runs just inside the proposed right-of-way. What that is, is an old, existing public right-of-way. What we have done is superimposed our proposed street on top of something that was already there. For those of you who are familiar with the area, this road actually, if you continue straight across Interstate, enters Lakes at Ascension. Eads Road is what this really is. It appears that when the Interstate people came through, they cut the road, they built a service drive on the other side of Interstate to maintain the other section of the road. This one was simply abandoned. The complexing issue is the utility companies used it. There are still utilities following that corridor, specifically on the south side. I believe there's a fiber optic cable, there's obviously a visible power line system. In conversations with the utility companies, they are adamant that they still have the rights to that area. So what we have done is tried to simply put the road where there already is, although abandoned a public road right-of-way. One of the issues the engineering review agency had was concerning, can we line it up with Burger King Drive? That would encompass a slight shift at the roadway. We can do that because it's so small. We prefer not to, because, you know, as we say it, Burger King should have lined up with the abandoned public road. This was already permitted many years ago. It's visible, if you ride by there, it's visible in area photographs. One of the big issues, and we spent literally months and months and months, is on the traffic situation. That is a high-traffic corner. In addition to that, though, it is a commercial corner. There is commercial literally surrounding this property on the north, across the road on 73, and obviously, this property backs up Interstate 10. This is a commercial site. It's zoned for commercial use. What the developer tried to do was come up with a multi-use scenario, and we met with the highway department. They gave us a very comprehensive list of the stuff they wanted. We then met with the planning commission staff, we met with the engineering review agency, and we prepared what we thought was a comprehensive traffic impact study or analysis. When we submitted it, the engineering review agency had more additional questions, so we actually did a supplemental study. So we have actually, in our opinion, studied this thing to death. You know, y'all all know that regardless of what happens here concerning the routes and so forth, the state is going to drive the permitting on turn lanes and boulevard access and so forth. So what we have done is tried to incorporate what they wanted with the results of our traffic analysis, and we have shown that on the map you're showing. I have in attendance, the traffic engineer did these reports. I think it's important to note that a firm out of New Orleans, Grab's La Salle and the Moe, I believe you say it, has prepared construction plans to do a, I would say, a massive construction project between, basically, this project and LA 621. It's going to involve changes to the interstate ramps, it's going to improve the light, I believe, at Seabro Road. That is coming and is scheduled to be actually started for bids in December of '07 with construction in '08. So what we did in our studies and our reports, we incorporated all the data we could find on this pending construction, and combined it with some studies that were actually done previously down the street by ABNB to come up with an analysis of what's coming, because what's there now will not be there in six months. So we feel like we've touched on all the points. We feel like what we have presented is logical. We'd be glad to answer any questions. Like I say, we do have the traffic engineer. If you have any traffic questions, we do have the developer, if you want to know what his vision is for the uses and so forth. Be glad to answer any questions.
Are there any comments or questions from commissioners, from Mr. Sledge at this time?
I see that lots 1 and 4 will have direct access to Highway 73. Was consideration given to limiting entrance to the Marketplace Avenue only?
That issue showed up meeting one day one with the state highway department. Believe it or not, they did not have an objection to lots 1 and 4. Their objection was to the corner lots. You know, this is commercial property. It would have to be right in, right out, it could not be otherwise. I believe we've agreed, or took the exception to do it lot 1, but I believe lot 4, they wanted to have an access to the highway. But there again, the state will actually be the permitting agency, so what we want really doesn't matter at this point.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? If there are no other questions at this time, I'd like to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this property, please sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak? Comments or questions from commissioners?
Explain to me why you can't, you can't address, you know, the issue with the, you know, the issue with the extension of this left-turn lane to Seabroad? I mean, you state that you can't do it until the design phase is completed. Who's doing the design phase? Why can't you respond to that?
Well, we do the design phase when we get conceptual approval. That is, there again, that's going to be a final decision by the state as what they are going to require. We anticipate they're going to require the extension, and then the geometrics simply have to be worked out at the design level. And we're committed to do whatever we have to do on that scenario.
And you know, I understand what you're saying about lots one and four about, you know, it's up to the state, you know, to determine what's permitted on, you know, for access, and that's provided that we accept a subdivision showing frontage of Highway 73. The way I look at it, there's no reason why you can't lay out these lots, not lose any lots, and have all four lots fronting on Marketplace. You know, with the limited access easement along the west end of the property to prevent, you know, any, those two lots from gaining a right of, a driveway onto Highway 73. You know, this area of Highway 73 in the mornings and in the afternoon is absolutely brutal. You know, I can tell you how you analyze the traffic. With traffic is backed up, it's zero movement. So I can't support this with those two lots fronting on Highway 73 as their only means of ingress and egress. You know, you're going to have to come back with a layout that shows them coming off of Marketplace.
Well, we, you know, if I can respond real quick, we don't have to change the layout. Those are, the people who are going to be buying these lots, your major gas stations and fast food scenarios, they're going to want the view, the exposure on Highway 73. If necessary, we can simply dedicate a private drive in the rear, which would give them physical access, but their address would still be on 73, which is, you know, a significant marketing scenario that the developer is going to need. A lot not having frontage on 73 is simply not even going to be close to the value of a property that's turned sideways.
I can handle that, as long as it's a limited access easement dedicated to the parish to prevent the driveway from ever being built.
I actually have driven past this several times this week and was there today for lunch in this area, and I counted six entrances in close proximity. I cannot support another one or two entrances right there. It was very confusing getting out. It's very hard to check six different roadways coming in to a suicide lane.
Well, you know, in the worst-case scenario, we would agree to no drives on connections to 73. We would do the rear access. And I'm not prepared to say the state wouldn't require that anyway, so if it's of serious concern to y'all, I think we just commit to it now, because the state will not object to that for sure.
Sherri, you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm a little concerned about the driveways lining up with Burger King also, because what you've created is someone turning left into Burger King is going to be running head-on into someone turning left into your Marketplace Avenue. I think they have to line up. And I understand it's not a public road, but I think you're creating a problem if you don't. And like we've all said, this is a very congested area. It's got enough problems.
I suspect we could do that. We would literally tweak it probably in the front half of Lot Two, just line it up. You know, all the years I've done it, we've never, we've never let the private drive the public, and this is at the location of an existing or was a public street. So we just put it there, and Burger King issues came up later. We never even thought that that was going to be an issue, but if it's that important, it's really a minor change from reality.
I think it's a safety issue, a big safety issue.
A big safety issue in that area because there's already so many commercial entrances to so many. Just, just the Shell station has two right there. And then there's, I can't remember off the top of my head, but I counted six today.
Well, you know, if we do all this, we'll have one, and we'll have a left-turn lane, right-turn lane, and so forth, so we can do that.
Was consideration given to having the entrance and exit across from Mission or Seabro? I'm not sure if you own property across from Seabro, but especially with the light being there, you would have a common public road. You keep mentioning that Burger King's not a public road, but Mission and Seabro both are.
To answer your question, simply yes. The problem with the Seabro Road is we can't get there from our property. The impact, you know, and beyond that, there's going to be a significant impact on the layout of the lot. You could have a significant amount of unusable space simply because you're going to be creating triangles and S-curves. The same thing with Mission Drive. This property simply doesn't lay out cleanly. What we have shown, and there again, we're utilizing what was already there, does exceed the minimum separation requirements for the light. We did toy with the Mission Drive scenario, and we simply couldn't come out with anything that would be, there again, marketable lots. It just, it oversized one side and undersized the other side, but we did, we did spend time looking at both of those scenarios.
So the Seabro actually lines up across from the McDonald's mobile property and not your own? Okay.
Mr. Sanji. I've got a question for you about the pumps. How big of an issue is that, that they're not on 73?
It's real, we did not include it in our final comment because the biggest issue I have is in residential subdivisions. If the parish ever comes back and puts in a community system, you'd be ripping up every driveway in front of every lot. This being a commercial development, you've only got three driveways to, you know, to cross to get back to the pump station. It's not that big of an issue. So it's generally a standard comment that comes from us. That's why it was in the original letter. But on further thought, in my opinion, it's not that big of an issue.
And the other thing is, in a residential subdivision, it's usually a lot further away from the main highway. This is actually not very far.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? If not, then what is the wish of the commission?
I'm going to make a motion to approve, subject to the following. I think that your final plan needs to demonstrate internal circulation as the sole means of circulation into lots one and four. The plat should show a five-foot limited access easement along the west property line abutting the right-of-way of LA 73. And Marketplace, the center line of Marketplace should line up with the center line of the Burger King entrance. In a geometry that's acceptable to this CRA, DRA.
Can you explain the easement along the front? Is that basically an easement saying that if they can't have a driveway?
Correct.
Okay. Either way.
Like a buffer.
I mean, you can do it with a note, really, as opposed to an easement. My problem with an easement is it may get confusing.
You just want to...
You can put a note on the plat that says lots one through four do not have driveway access to Highway 73.
It says two and three right now, so just make that lots one.
Lots one, two, three, and four shall have no access to. It should include all four lots.
We've typically done with a note.
I'm good with that.
That's it?
Is it? My motion.
Have a motion to approve with condition by Julio Dumas.
Second.
Seconded by Steve Barrow. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item seven. Public mean to consider the following subdivision of property with a variance, seven A, the Jeffrey L. Kling property, tract J and K.
Hey, y'all good? My name is Jeffrey Kling. I'm the owner of the property in question. I'm asking for the planning commission to approve with Jeffrey's permission to petition to carry comments from the planning department and consulting agencies and others. The GWA has been addressed and corrected on the plat, and my survey is here for any technical questions.
Any comments or questions from commissioners?
I have a question. We have lots called out, but we don't have owners of the lots, the adjacent property owners. Do you know who they are?
On which side?
Let's say, I want all of them.
The ones up in the front on Highway 74, the right-of-ways are Jeremy Semino and Gary Bro. That's AM 1V1 and AM 1A1. On the east side would be, I think her name is Blackwell. Now she's got a tract that's borders mine.
Okay. And then to the north of this?
The north is Eagle's Way subdivision backs up to a lot behind there that has access. Dutchdown Hollow subdivision.
Okay, they're on the west according to this.
Yes, but the road comes back behind my property, and it dead-ends at the back.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
What is the surfacing on your J and D lane extension? What are you going to surface that with? What will be your surface?
It's a limestone driveway all the way to my existing house.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? If there are no other comments or questions at this time, then we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this property, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you'll get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Comments, questions from commissioners? What is the wish of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve that there'll be no further subdividing of this land and that this road cannot be taken into public right-of-way.
Have a motion to approve with condition by Paige Becknell.
Second.
Seconded by Steve Barrow. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item eight, committee reports, eight A subdivision ordinance committee.
We met, and you should have a copy of a street sign ordinance before you. This was requested by our chief engineer for DPW, Jackie Bowman, and this is to provide clarity for emergency vehicles and as well as an aid to maintenance. The maintenance crews are having a problem distinguishing between the public and private roads. The ordinance says that the public street signs will be green and the private streets signs will be blue with a standard letter size and letter height. And we will, this is just for your information, we would like to bring this before the commission next month.
So you're looking for a motion to hold a public hearing on this revision to ordinance at next month's meeting?
Correct. And then another, do you want to do that now, or should I continue?
I mean, we can go ahead, either way. We can go ahead and let you finish your report, or we can do it item by item to make sure that you, everybody, you know, keeps up and remembers as we're going along.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to bring this for a public hearing at the next meeting.
I have a motion to hold a public hearing at next month's commission meeting on this item by Steve Barrow, seconded by Don Grant. Is there any opposition or discussion?
There's a mistake on the proposal. If I'm correct.
Okay.
I'll see it right now.
Motion passes.
Okay, and then we discussed, we have Chris Ewing, one of our engineers, he is working on adjusting the drainage ordinance. No, we got the drainage ordinance, and we need to update the drainage policy to match the new drainage ordinance. And then the checklist, Chris is also working on our checklist, which don't match the new ordinance either, so he is going through those, and they are preparing a new developer's packet that will reflect all these items that will be updated. And that's it.
Is it, Chris, let me go ahead and kind of put you on the spot. Is this going to be ready for next month's commission meeting? Will we be able to review this for next month, or will January, at least by the January meeting?
I think by January for sure.
Okay.
Yeah, because I don't, has the ordinance actually been approved and adopted? It has? Yes?
Drainage ordinance is in effect.
Okay.
Is that it for your report? Okay. Item eight B, strategic planning committee. Mr. Segler.
At the last strategic planning commission meeting, we began discussion of the subdivision construction standards ordinances that were originally created, I guess, and discussed in 2006. All that history, of course, precedes me, and those were presented to the strategic planning commission with some comments by myself and the Department of Public Works Director Bob Turner, and we expect further action on it in the near future.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
All right. Item nine, new business. Is there any items of new planning commission business anyone has to bring before the full commission at this time? Nothing. All right, item 10, old business, 10 A, Lowe's Commercial Development subdivision.
Good evening. My name's Matthew Newchurch with your planning design group. Here tonight requesting the final plat approval for the Lowe's Commercial subdivision. As the commission probably recalls, this item was tabled several months ago regarding some concerns regarding the lot size of lots six and seven, as they did not meet the minimum lot size criteria for this particular zoning. At that point in time, we were given two options by the commission to address this. One was to obviously revise the plat to make the lots adhere to the criteria, second of which was to apply to the BZA for, excuse me, for a waiver from the minimum lot size criteria for this particular zone. We began to move forward with the latter of those two options, submit the application to Mr. Becknell's office, and begin to move forward in that regard. Soon after that, we began having conversations with Mr. Becknell, Mr. Parryton, about the process, I guess, of how we got to where we were. Essentially, what came out of that is a letter from Mr. Becknell wrote us basically saying that because the lot size, excuse me, lot six and seven are designated as non-buildable lots, can't have a building permit assigned to them, no structure will ever be there, and was approved as such on the preliminary plat, then the plat as it existed should be in a condition approvable by the planning commission. So that being said, we were removed from the October 23rd, I believe, BZA meeting and placed on the agenda here tonight. So with all that, we're here again requesting final approval of the plat.
Comments or questions from commissioners? We did open up the public hearing last time, and I'm going to allow, if there is anyone here to address the commission on this property, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. No one to speak. Comments or questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Sherri Slimon. Seconded by Paige Becknell. Is there any opposition or discussion?
I'll oppose on the grounds that this sets a very dangerous precedent.
I have one nay by Julio Dumas. Motion passes. Item 10B, adoption of the September minutes, corrected as written, which, I think you all, yeah, you all had a, got a copy of that. Are there any comments or questions from commissioners on this?
Make...
I have a motion to approve by Steve Barrow, seconded by Julio Dumas. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 11, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some of them.
Have a motion by Julio Dumas to adjourn, seconded by Steve Barrow. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes, and we are adjourned. We will reconvene in 10 minutes for a joint session of the planning and zoning commissions.